Good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:01 PM and the date is August 9, 2011. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. The board consists of five members. Alternates taking full part in the discussions and becoming a voting member in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are the members Ms. Betty Holler, Mr. Greg LeVell, Ms. Michelle Grabel, Ms. Joan Krenansky, and alternates Ms. Lisa Carson and Ms. Kay Towesley. I am John Goldsy, the acting chair. Also present are zoning administrator, Mr. John Paskey, and secretary, Mr. Paul Eschenbacher. At this point, I would like to ask one of my colleagues, Ms. Betty Holler, to read the procedure with her lovely voice.
The board operates according to the following procedure. First, the CHIA will name and describe the case. The zoning administrator or secretary will state the basis of the objection and any applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The appellant or representative will give reason why the appeal should be reviewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Testimony from the floor shall be closed and the board will deliberate and render a decision. According to Athens City Code Section 2307-03B, the board has the power to grant variances from the strict application of the code provided the variance may not be contrary to the public interest, the spirit of the code is observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 2307-10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the board finds based on direct specific findings of fact that each of the following conditions has been supported. First, practical difficulty and undue hardship because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property. A literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Second, exceptional circumstances. They are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Literal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone in the same vicinity while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same vicinity or the same zone. Minimum variance. The variance requested is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which the variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Any person resident or officer, department or appointed body of the city of Athens aggrieved by a decision of the board may petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the board to the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Holler. There are two cases on your agenda tonight. Case number one is number 11-13B. The property is at 178 North Congress Street. They're zoned R1. David and Carla Hawk are the appellant. And case number two is case 11-14B, and V stands for variance. Property 762, West Union Street, and Zone B3, and Stephen F. Bush is the appellant. The board is required to take testimony under oath. Would anyone wishing to speak concerning any item on this agenda please stand? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. May we see? Case number one, case 11-13B, 178 North Congress Street, Zone R1. David and Carla Hawk, the appellant. The appellant is requesting a variance from ACC 230502 to allow in addition to a nonconforming building, a duplex where only single residential use is allowed in an R1 zone per ACC 230401A1, and four parking spaces where six are required per ACC 231001, Table B, Office Street Parking Vehicles. And from ACC 231001, Table A, scheduled bulk controls to allow in addition with a rear setback of 16 feet where 30 feet is the minimum requirement. Mr. Eschenbacher, I just want to make sure that that deck and the steps is all the addition, right? Is it all the apartment?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. First off, my apologies for how unwieldy the variance request is worded, but I wanted to include exactly why the nonconforming building is nonconforming. It is a duplex in an R1 zone, and it only has four parking spaces where six are required, but those are both legal nonconformers. So they aren't requesting any kind of variances for those. Those are already set in place. However, because of ACC 230502, any nonconforming building that's altered or added to or changed in any way needs a variance to do so. Also, I wanted to point out that the addition that was put onto the building in and of itself does not affect any of the bulk controls. In other words, it's not in violation of any of the bulk controls itself, but because it's attached to a nonconforming building whose rear setback is not the minimum 30 feet, that's what the variance is for. So the addition itself is not any closer to the street or to the right of way than what's allowed. So it's...
Okay. I understand that the steps are already built.
Yes.
Was there any complaint that you guys investigated to find out?
I'm not sure the origins of finding out about it. I don't know whether one of our guys drove past or whether somebody alerted us, but by the time we found out about it, it was more than half completed. So that's why we alerted him right away and had him fill out a permit application, which they hadn't done yet, and the refusal was based on it.
All right. Any questions?
Okay, yes. When I got ready to see the building this afternoon, the street was closed off, so I did not actually see this property. So am I to understand that the deck and the steps to it are in place now?
Yes.
Okay. And the roof?
And the door.
Okay. So they've already done it?
Yeah, the road was closed, but if it is still go through itself.
Somehow I turned around and went out.
Any other questions? Okay. Appellants, Mr. David?
Yes.
Or Ms. Carla? Please come to the board. Come to the board here. Yes, yes, sir. And state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dave Hawk. My address is 4750 Fox Lake Road, Athens. First off, I'd like to apologize. When I built the porch, I didn't realize I needed a variance. I didn't even know I needed a building permit. It's 36 square feet. Soon as city code alerted me, I quit because I'm not trying to break the rules. I didn't know. I know ignorance isn't, you know, but I didn't know. I have some pictures. If you'd like to see a picture, since you couldn't get up there, I have a picture of it if you'd like. There's several pictures here. The one that is best that shows...
Do you want to just start at that end and then I can just pass them on down?
Sure. Sure. I also made up a little summary. I had a few copies. Would you guys like some of those or...
No, you can't read it.
My intention was to improve and make the house safer for the occupants. When I first started this project, at the back, on the back steps, I think the one picture will show, there's two doors. There's a kitchen and a hallway. And the house had been rented before I bought it. It was primarily rented as one big house with six people. And that's not really what I want to do, you know? That's, I would rather have it as a true duplex, and that was my intentions. My intentions were to separate the upstairs and downstairs apartments. I thought also by putting in steps would provide means of egress. It would also make it more privacy between the two apartments because the reason I put the door in where I did, there's a landing right there as you walk in, and I'd like to close that off on the inside. So you just, it can't all be one open house. If that makes sense? I don't, I don't know if I explained that.
Absolutely, it makes sense.
Okay.
Are you saying that at the moment, it is not a duplex?
Yes, it is. Well, it's a duplex, and at the top of the stairs, they lock the doors, so you can't get between the...
It has two kitchens that are fully...
It has two kitchens, two bathrooms.
Okay.
All that.
All right.
But it's really, you can open that one door and the whole house is open.
Okay.
But I'd like to make it so that's not possible. That was my intention of doing this. Also, if you look at the one picture underneath, there's a door that goes to the basement, and this benefits me, but water comes in that basement or did before because it sits below the grade there a little bit, and the roof is, I really thought that would happen. The roof and deck have kept the water from coming in the basement since I put it on. Since I bought this place, I don't know if this matters. I've never been here or done anything like this before.
When did you buy it?
Pardon me?
When did you buy it?
Last October.
Okay.
In order to make it a true duplex, I put in two electric meters. I upgraded the service this summer. So that utility is separated. I put in 100 amp and 200 amp services, updated the wiring. The heating and cooling, when I bought it, there was one furnace for the whole house. I've since put in, separated it, so one apartment has its own heating unit, the upstairs has its own heating unit, so I put in, I replaced the gas furnace and I put in a heat pump and an air conditioner, or an electric furnace for the upstairs. Plumbing, I've separated. There was one hot water tank for the whole house. I've since put in two hot water tanks so it can be split to me the way it should be. The upstairs kitchen for the upstairs apartment was not very much. It was a sink like in a closet, stove that set out. I've put in a new washer and dryer, put in new cabinets, put in a new laundry room. So I truly am making it two separate apartments, and that's my intention. The house, this may not have anything to do with it either, but the house was really dirty because we spent a lot of time cleaning. We painted the whole thing on the inside. We're painting the outside, which is very close to being finished right now. I'm not asking, I didn't build this to put any more people in there or parking or anything like that. I really thought I was doing something to make it better, to make it better for me and probably, I hope, the people around me. I think two separate apartments is much better than just six people living together. I really am not interested in that sort of rental. Really, that's about it. That's about all I have.
Did you build this yourself or was the contractor...
No, I did it.
Okay, did yourself. And you do have four space for parking? I didn't really see what it was, but you do have four.
So these are, in effect, side entrances or back entrances? They're on the side of the house?
Yeah, that, the new entrance was going to be on the side right there.
And it's for the upstairs apartment?
That's just going to be for the upstairs apartment only. There's something else. I built the steps that came straight out. If it would help to get them a little bit further away from the street, I could easily turn the steps, you know, so they were by the chimney. I think that might help on the footage.
Are you going to enclose this or what I saw today is going to be the way it's going to be?
No, I'll put railings around the tops and handrails and that sort of thing, but not enclosed.
Okay. Okay. When you go into the front entrance, there is a single entrance in the front, right?
Right.
Okay. And so there must be some kind of a hallway or something that allows you to go?
As you walk into the, into the main living room in the downstairs, there's a set of steps that turn up, and then right where I put that door, there were two windows, and there's a landing right there, and then the steps go on up. I would like to close that off in that landing so people just can't go from the downstairs, you know, and go up. At the very top of the stairs, there's a door that is locked.
So what you're doing is building an entrance to the second floor apartment?
Yes.
Where is this, there's a front entrance to the first floor apartment that would be at the front porch. Is there another way to enter or exit that first floor?
Yes, there's a back door.
That would be in the basement?
No, it's off the first floor.
That's on the side.
It's off the first floor.
Yes.
Okay. Well, according to the code, nonconforming properties are supposed to eventually come into conformance or disappear. So in effect, you are truly making permanent the duplex nature of the property, but I guess you could say it is already that because it does have two kitchens, two bathrooms.
Right.
Okay.
I would like to add that I've been pretty adamant with the code officers. There are many and many residences around town that may have duplexes or triflexes. The landlords have opened up doors to allow entrance from one to the other, and I've been making them close it up because it does then make the occupancy greater than five, five or more, six or more becomes a fire issue, a building code issue. So I, separating them to less than five people per unit is then a requirement that I've been trying to enforce.
Okay. All right. So you're not trying to necessarily make them nonconforming, or less nonconforming, but to be safer?
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay.
And this may be off the subject, but I was looking, the definition of the addition, you know, Section 2310 is not in there, but you call this an addition?
More than three foot away from the building, so...
Yeah. Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir. You know, you may have a chance to come back again.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone in here who wants to make a general comment about this case?
Oh, I think so.
Or in favor of the case? Let's go in first, if anyone who wants to make a comment in favor of this case, this variance. Anyone in general commentary? Okay, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Linda Phillips. I live directly across the street at 171, and we have noticed that you have improved the outside of the property. I'm glad to hear actually that it will become a true duplex because living across from that property for the last 10 years has been pure hell. It is the worst property on the street. I can't even use my front bedroom. Sometimes I can't watch TV in my living room because when there's six people coming out on the front porch and all of their friends and all of their cars, it becomes a nightmare till 12, 1 o'clock. We constantly have to call the police. So I'm glad that this is going to be separated. I'm not sure when it became a three and three duplex. I've lived there since 1988, and I thought when I moved in, it was a one person downstairs and two people upstairs. I guess some of my questions would be, do you have a rental management company that's working with you or are you renting it yourself?
For right now, I have a rental management company. That kind of came off of what I bought the property, but I plan to manage it myself.
So that you would make your students aware or your renters aware that it's a residential neighborhood?
Yes.
And there's small children that live directly across the street, people that have to get up and go to work, and ask them to please use the driveway because that's one thing that has not happened. The driveway happens to be very narrow, so you have to stack the two cars and then two more cars, and then they don't seem to get out, and I've seen plenty of them actually end up in the grass and have to be towed out. So if you can help them with that situation. I don't think it looks that bad. The only comment I would make is it goes right into the grass, the steps do, and so that's going to become at some point just a mud pit or an issue and would need to be addressed. I'm hoping that someday that can be again a single family residence. I don't, obviously this will affect it because it becomes more permanently a duplex, but then, you know, if you don't approve it and it becomes a six-person rental, then we have to live with that until it can, we can figure out how to get it back to a owner occupied or an R1 housing.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir? In general commentary.
Was he sworn in?
Sworn in. Guy hasn't sworn in.
Yeah. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
All the truth. I'm David Phillips. I live across the street. Hot calling the kettle black. I've got rental property myself. We have rental property right next door. Number of years ago, my wife's recollection is a little bit different than me, I thought it was a three-bedroom downstairs and a one-bedroom upstairs. And then at some point, it turned into, kind of morphed over to, you know, four people downstairs and to, or something, whatever it was, it has, the intensity of that has increased. In the rental business, I've learned that a one-bedroom apartment, people typically buy their beer at the bar. Two-bedroom, they buy their beer at a six-pack, buy the six-pack. A three-bedroom, they'll buy it by the keg. Anything over three bedrooms, it's by the keg. And I would, somehow I'd love to have the, it brought back down as far as the intensity, how many people actually live there, but I would support cutting it up into a duplex and having it separate. That's helpful for me to live across the street with a duplex rather than the kegs of beer when six people live together.
Well, you still have six people.
Now, my point is this. If there's six people as a group, that's when they buy their beer by the keg, and it's on the front porch, and it's very, very social and extremely loud. Three people living in one place and two people living in another connected, no harm no foul, that is not an issue, but it's when you have large group housing where it's much more social and living right across the street from it. We, it's the problem house. I mean, it's... And, you know, many years ago, it wasn't a problem, but then as it further got kind of morphed into, from three people or four people to six, that's kind of stung, but I would support the barrier in keeping it extremely separate.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in general? Please, sir? State your name and address for the records, please.
Yes, I'm Charles Bryant. I live at 169 North Congress, right next to the Phillips and diagonally across to the party porch. And of course, I identify with their problems. We have a seven-year-old, a six-year-old in our house who goes to bed sometimes, but gets awakened, awakened up frequently this spring by the parties on the porch across the street. When you wake up in the morning and you count the number of cars in the driveway, you realize that there are at least six and sometimes more. And the car, the point being that you can't, you're parking two aside, two by the side. You cannot, in fact, get your car out without other people moving their cars. So frequently what happens is they put as many cars as they can on the street. So our street is usually completely filled up with cars. And the number of people, I'm a little baffled that what we're doing here is we're taking something that was being done illegally, too many people in the house. No, nobody can of course verify that. Nobody can tell you how many people are living in that house. But now that, what we're doing is we're trying to change the house around so that it's no longer illegal for this many people to be in the house. I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, my understanding was that there were six people already there living, and now they're just having a separate entrance.
There were more than six people parking their cars.
Something that the court office would know how many people are renting, right?
Correct.
How many are legally who have signed up to be renters, but that's not the number of people that are living there.
Well, you know, if they had a party or people are coming as a guest, those are the things that, you know, cannot be verified.
Their parties go on all week in that case.
Yeah.
So I'm a bit baffled by, but what we're trying to do here is to make this a legal situation. I'm not sure I agree with the idea that the beer keg won't come out when there's six people in the house just because there's a door between. The students generally get along quite well together, and the parties that they have don't always, don't always have invited people. The people that come frequently to that house have been people walking up the street because they know there's a party there. So the point here is I think we do not need to take away any more green space by expanding things out onto the grass. We do not need to apply the rules which forfeit the R1 neighborhood ability to have a decent, quiet neighborhood with people around us that we can speak to. And we have, we have gone over to that house many times and talked with the people over there this last spring, and they were always very nice to say, oh, we're sorry, we didn't know, but it doesn't matter. Because when the other people get there, they're not, they don't know that the other people have apologized. They come and they do that same thing. So I oppose this wholeheartedly. I think that this house should go back to R1, and I do not think that you should allow a duplex kind of an assignment.
Okay, so you're speaking in opposition of this?
And pure opposition to the whole thing.
But Chuck, before you leave, I just want to say that we are not now making this a duplex. It exists already as a duplex, and I think we would...
It existed as a duplex, nobody knew that.
Well, it has an upstairs kitchen and a downstairs kitchen, which essentially constitutes a duplex, and that is nonconforming in an R1 district, but somehow it was allowed to happen and consequently having attained that status.
So now that something illegal has happened, we can now cover that by...
Well, it's not, we're not doing it now. That has already happened in the past, so...
So there's no way we can go back and tell people that...
As I said earlier, theoretically, no, not theoretically, in the code, it says that nonconforming properties are not supposed to be, that amount of money you can spend on rehabbing them is supposed to be limited because they're not...
I hope you don't legalize it now.
Well, we're not legalizing now. It's already legal.
I think, sir, if they remove the steps and the deck, they can go back to whatever they were doing before.
Which, which is using it as a duplex, which they are allowed to do. We're not doing it. It was done in the past. We'd have to look at the records to see when and why that happened because that has always been an R1 district.
It was when I bought my house there, yes.
Exactly.
Didn't matter though.
So how it got duplexed, when, don't know. But now somehow it's, it is already legal. We're not doing it tonight.
Well, I understand that Mr. Hawk has not done anything illegal.
No, he's not.
But he's trying to, he's trying to make it, what was he... But he's trying to, he's trying to make it, what was it, illegal, now a legal situation?
No, it's already legal. It's already legal.
I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand.
We'd have to check the records to see who made it legal.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, I have a question for Code Office. I think it was brought up by one of the speakers and that was, they thought it was a three-bedroom on the first floor and a space available for three renters and then a one person on the second floor. And there is a situation like that on the street where I live where the first floor is a three occupancy and the second floor is a one occupancy. Could we check the code or check the file on this property to see if, you know, sometimes things morph into situations that, it would be interesting to see the exact paperwork that designated this a duplex with three and three, or is the possibility that it was a three and one as opposed to a three and three, which would make sense for the four parking places?
Right. I can tell you this, that from, I signed the permit a year ago on the change of ownership and it was duplicated from the long, it was there before, from how many years before, I don't know, it was a three and three.
Well, but it had been, in the last several years, I mean, I'm very familiar with the house. My daughter lived there when she was a freshman at OU and I've been in that house. I know the person that originally owned it, it was her, she owned it at the time and I think at least it's changed hands at least once, if not twice since then, four times. So what I'm saying is in the process of all of this, I think we should investigate whether there isn't some, some slip-up somewhere way back, who knows when, what... I had to call in the question, this house down the street from me and when they looked in the code, there was and there was an issue in there.
When I began this job, the way that the individual rental units were gauged as to how many people they could have was based on the space available in each unit, how many bedrooms, how much space in each bedroom, and also the amount of parking then. When I started, it was one space per unit and this has been a rental since before the 1997 parking changes. So when it was a duplex, it was allowed to have only two parking spaces, which it obviously has. Also, when we, it was determined going through permits that for instance in an R1 zone, if there is a house that had three parking spaces and three bedrooms, but for some reason they only listed two people, they were allowed to increase it to three if they had the available space and parking. I think that's what happened here is that the, one of the apartments was allowed to increase to three based on the fact that they had enough parking and enough bedroom space.
Now, the parking was added later. And now we're talking six.
Four what?
Four occupants.
No, we're talking six occupants, two, three in each unit.
So nobody's, we could, I mean, they used to have files, I've looked at these files on various units. It seems like if there's even a question, we should check this out because...
Well, I do when I, we get individual permit applications, updates from changes of ownership or certain places created, we do check into the history and it was legally approved back then. If it was originally for one person in the upstairs apartment, for instance, at this place, it was legally allowed to increase to three based on the fact that they had the available bedroom space and the available parking.
But they don't have the parking.
Not now, but the changes were made before the 97 rule.
I think the parking was grandfathered because that parking pad was added sometime here in the last one of the ownership changes. That wasn't always parking.
It was added in, after when Jagman owned it, so that was in like 98, 99.
Yes, it was there when she was there and I'm trying to think when that was.
Okay, folks, let me ask one question. Has there been any prior variance on this property?
No.
Any regulations?
No.
So how did it get from R1 to a duplex?
I don't know how long it's been a duplex. It's been a duplex since I've worked for the Code Office and that's at least 21 years. I have no recollection or no idea how, when it became a duplex. It looks from that old entrance at the back at the top that it's been there quite a while, but I couldn't pin down exactly when.
You mean the sort of catwalk that goes...
Yes.
Okay, I came in 68 and I lived up on, what's the street above? And that little catwalk has been there since 68. If that tells you anything.
And the beginning of the registry of rental units began in 75.
Okay, okay. So I, much as we might want to say, oh, this is going to go back to a single-family residence, I don't think that's legally going to happen. It functions as a duplex, it's going to prove, are the cities a duplex?
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that maybe we could decrease the residency which would...
Well, once again, Mr. Bush fought with the, with certain expectations and I don't know how you would decrease those at this moment.
I'm just saying that if it was brought up...
So there are six bedrooms?
Must be.
I'm not sure if there's six bedrooms, but there's...
Some of them are there six, or that they have two.
You don't, you don't need three bedrooms for three people.
Right.
It's size, total bedroom size for each room.
There's six, are there two living rooms? Yeah, two kitchens, yes, two dining areas or...
Dining kitchen would be the same.
Eating kitchen.
Dining room's not required for an apartment.
Oh, and he was just asking.
Yeah, okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Mr. Hawke, we can have the final word.
To the Phillipses, I empathize with you, I understand. I wouldn't want a party house across the street from me. I don't want to, the reason I'm going to make it into a true duplex is because I don't want a party house. That's, that's not what I'm after. I've spent a lot of money on the place. I plan to own it for a while. It's not something I'm trying to, to take the money out of and leave.
That's the house that fell in that garage.
You had a concern about the sidewalk or the entrance where the steps was? I stopped when city code came by. I mean, I had half, there's half the roof on and I put the other piece down and then I quit because I'm not trying to break the rules, I'm not trying to, to mess anything up. You know, if I would have known this, I would have, I would have addressed it to begin I have intentions and I, I think I have a good enough plan that on the inside, because the woodwork in that house is pretty nice and then in those steps, when I separate that, I'm going to try to do it so that I don't tear up any of the old woodwork or anything like that, so if anyone would ever want to buy it, you know, and make it a family home again, that it would be that way. I'm not going to go in there and just rip all that nice old woodwork and stuff out. Right now in the upstairs, I have three renters. I found them. The rental agency didn't do it, I did it myself because I wanted to police who was in there. They're three grad students. One young lady's from New Jersey and she, one young lady's from Germany and another young lady is, I don't know if she's local, but she's gone to school here. They're all three grad students. Downstairs, the rental agency found those two ladies. I don't know if they're grad students, I don't know much about them. But, but that's, that's the kind of people that I look for.
Mr. Hawke, do you have any other rentals? Is this like your first?
No, I have, I have one down on Hudson Avenue that I've had since 1986 or 1980, somewhere right in there, in the late 80s, mid to late 80s. It's a duplex.
Okay. And are, do you plan, there are some serious safety issues in the back of the property.
Yeah. I, next summer I would like to get in there and clean a lot of that up. I'm a school teacher, I'm going to be back in school in less than a week, so my, my hardcore working is over for right now, but yeah, you're right. I don't, I don't know how unsafe it is, I won't disagree that it is, but it definitely needs cleaned up.
We'll need to talk about that too, in regards to the, the wall and the garage.
Right.
And the fact that it's holding up the road.
Are you going to put that light on the porch on the side?
Um, I tell you the truth, I haven't even thought about that. I just thought, you know, I just quit where I was and I never really gave that any consideration.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's unusual, but quickly if you want to have a quick comment.
Over the years, it has morphed into a bigger place and he's at kind of a high-risk area right now whether this goes through or it doesn't. I would just check to ask if he'd be willing to take a two and a three and have it pass. He has two upstairs or however he wants to do it, but cap it...
I wouldn't be willing to do that.
We're going to go with whatever is proposed right now. Thank you. Any final, final word? Okay, no, very good. And this guy has closed the floor and this section is open in here. Do we need to discuss any further or does someone with make a motion?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion. I move that we grant a variance to the property at 176 North Congress Street from...
178.
What'd I say? Six. 178 North Congress Street. From section ACC 230502 to allow in addition to a non, a legally non-conforming building, which is a duplex, where only a single residential use is allowed in an R1 zone, and four parking spaces where six are required as per ACC 231001, Table B, Off-Street Parking Requirements, and essentially what he's really asking for, ACC 231001, Table A, Schedule of Ball Controls to allow in addition with a rear setback of 16 feet where 30 feet is the minimum requirement. And I would add that this addition, which has a roof, not be allowed ever to be enclosed.
Second, anyone?
A second.
Okay, folks, practical difficulty in undue hardship because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, the liberal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty for undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. So what is the practical difficulty?
Well...
I think it's hard to find.
Yes, I agree with that.
Well, I, the practical difficulty comes because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances and I would say that the extraordinary circumstance is that this house in an R1 zone, which used to be an R1, a single-family house, has somehow been allowed to morph into a duplex and now is a legally non-conforming duplex. And given the fact that it is a legal duplex at the moment, I think that it poses a problem for the owner that's really not necessary to the accomplishment of the code because essentially he's asking for a 16-foot setback, which is in fact no different from what is actually already there. The only thing that's prompting him having to come here is the fact that, what is it?
Change the footprint. Basically change the...
Yes, that he's, he's...
And a non-conforming...
Right, okay, it's a non, it's a fact that it's...
Non-conforming in three or four points.
Yes, but it's legal and so it's only the fact that it is non-conforming that's prompting his having to be here. It's really not changing what's pretty much already there.
What about anyone else from your comments? Exceptional circumstances?
Well, since it is a legally non-conforming property and is a duplex, it does make sense to have two entrances that are accessible for people to get into and out of apart from the single entrance at the front door.
Well, there are already two in the rear. There are already two in the rear.
So they wouldn't necessarily have to be two additional ones?
Well, how, how would you get without going through the rest of the house to get to the...
Second floor, there's two doorways, one coming out of the kitchen, one coming out of another room in the rear of the house. There's two doorways up there.
And one's for the second floor and one's for the first? As I say, I wasn't able to get up there.
Well, they're both on the second floor. They come out to the...
Catwalk from the street.
Catwalk.
There's a catwalk from the street, the second floor, and there's an entrance on the second floor through the kitchen and an entrance on the second floor through like a little hallway. That comes from a catwalk connected to Woodford Street.
Right, so there are already two doors.
Side by side, if there was ever a fire right there on that porch, there's no way out.
Okay. Well, down the steps. Right now.
Well, because that door will be, it's locked from both sides.
I would still maintain that the circumstances surrounding this house are not, not general in the neighborhood because I hope there are not too many non-conforming duplexes in this area.
Okay, preservation of equal property rights, liberal interpretation of these regulations would deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone, at the same extent.
No, I mean, there are no other people in that situation in that neighborhood.
And minimum variance, this is, I'm comfortable with that, you know, this, to me, this is not really an addition, it just steps to go into the house, so you said it was a legal conform, non-conforming, and so it's, to me, is minimal. Any other comments? Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be substantial detriment to the adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say again, the fact, what he's asking for is a setback, which is not much difference than what's already there. And if there is detriment, it happened a long time ago when this turned into a duplex when it should have remained a single-family home, but that's not what we're being asked to address.
I can add that if this was a single-family house and this patio was being built on the side of the house, we'd be here doing the same thing. So the fact that it's a duplex, we'd still be here.
Sure, as I said, it's not non-conforming.
It's all we're addressing.
The setbacks are non-conforming, not what type of structure it is.
Not of a general nature. Let's hope not.
Let's hope not.
You folks ready to vote your own? Do you want to start?
I want abstain.
Abstain? Okay.
And I'm going to take that same stance since I live very close.
Pull in the two alternates.
And we should have known that earlier.
Well, you know, let's go to the Code. Can we have the alternate vote?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to vote.
Go ahead.
I vote yes.
I vote no.
No?
I vote yes.
So we have how many so far?
Did you vote?
No, not yet.
Two yeses, one no.
Your yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we have yes, yes, and you?
Lisa?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, okay. And you vote?
So we have three yeses, right? No?
No.
And I would know as well.
Okay.
So you have the variance. Okay, case number two. It's case number 11-14B, property 762, West Union Street, is Zone B3 and Mr. Steven F. Bush is the appellant. The appellant is requesting a variance from ACC 2347A referencing ACC 230405A1 to allow residential use, two apartments on the first floor of a building located in the B3 zone where such use is not permitted. Mr. Eshinbaka, I went, I tried to find this place, there's like three, four different...
It's a category of caterpillar place.
Okay.
Like between bedrock rentals and the apartments.
Oh, okay, so it's not in the apartments, okay.
No, it's to the immediate right of those.
Chain link fence, it's one of those closet kind of looking buildings.
They rent the big cat equipment.
They rent the big cat equipment.
Even my GPS didn't tell me.
I don't have anything to add, I think the letter was pretty self-explanatory, so if you had any questions.
Okay, let's call Mr. Bush and would you like to come to the podium and state your name?
Was he sworn in?
No.
Was he sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think he still has...
No, he did. You did swear, right? I mean, you did swear, I have to tell the truth.
Okay, yeah.
Steve Bush, I live down in the Guysville area on Young Road, and it's pretty simple, I just want to change it to where I can put apartments in the building. So I don't have a whole lot to add.
So you don't want to use the office?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have my plumbing shop in the same building. And I just, my tenant's probably going to move out. I think their business is not doing too well in Athens, so I think they're going to move out. I don't know for sure. But if they do, I just want to have some plans in place to build some apartments in there.
So you have to do some remodeling, obviously.
Yeah, I'll have to get an architect, I haven't done anything like that, haven't gone through any architects. This is just preliminary, and so I don't have a whole lot to add.
Now, Joan, question?
Well, just in, I know you mentioned that there were apartments...
Yeah, I'm in apartments next...
Next door, but they were more or less off the road, you go off that side road and then they're more of an environment...
They're right next door to the...
Right, but, you know, green and shrubbery in between.
Pardon?
Green and shrubbery in between.
Yeah, there's some trees and a ditch, it's...
Between you and those apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Have you been to the tree commission? I mean, I'm having a lot of difficulty without having any kind of a plan of how that's going to be turned into apartments because...
It wouldn't have to be done. Hall of Works Interior, so that's an exemption from the shade tree commission. You would not have to go.
Because you're not extending...
It's not a Title forty-one, not extending the building footprint or anything.
You're just doing something within an existing building.
Just internal stuff.
So just a peculiar piece, is there, there's like, I don't know, is it a crusher or a huge piece of thing in the parking lot that has big posts around it, fence?
That's a big gas tank. That's where they fuel their equipment from. They keep D2 fuel.
So that would leave? That would be there?
Yeah, they would take that with them if they move out. If they don't move out, I'm not going to put a park, I'm just going to leave it commercial building.
So what is the sound for these apartments?
The B3. It's not, that's why he's here, because the first-floor residential on the B3 is not permissible.
I don't mean this, I mean the apartments that he owns next door. They're also in B3?
They are in B3 as well, yes.
And how old are they?
They look like they were in there a long time.
I think they were built in the sixties and the seventies.
Yeah, it's way before.
They were built nineteen seventy.
The ZO code.
Code came in in sixty-eight.
It was there before then.
They were all built at the same time they were built, I think, sixties and seventies, somewhere in there.
Did nobody go, did none of you go look at those?
I searched and searched for it. I drove.
I found it at the square.
And it never occurred to me that it was bedrock. I saw the little road that went down to the apartments, but, you know, if I'd read my thing more carefully, I would have known it was bedrock. Okay. All right, okay.
I also have my plumbing shop in the same building. And I, the plumbing shops in the back, about a fourth of the building, and then the front, three-fourths is rented to Caterpillar. I'm sure how many, once we get architects, we'll figure that all out.
Well, we sort of need to know now.
Well, I need to sort of need to get the zoning changed before I put too much time into...
Well, we probably won't give you a change unless we know how many people you talked about.
It says four, three.
Says, that's what it said. But not, that's what I just said, but...
Tammy, my office manager's done most of the, most of the headwork, she knows more about it than I do.
And here's the other thing, it says number of parking spaces numerous. I assume that there is...
More than two.
Probably plenty.
There's heavy equipment sitting there, I think.
Yeah, it appears there's enough space for the minimum seven, the five, once the apartment is ready. Four is a parking space.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would you like to say something too, or would you like to speak?
The back part of it wouldn't be, it's...
No, you'd have to come to the audio.
She hasn't been talking.
Yes, if you want, if you, you're the only one left.
That's fine.
And do you swear I could tell the truth, nothing but the truth and all the truth?
Yes. My name is Tammy Whitten, I live in Coolville, but I'm the office manager for Davidson Bush, which is the right now the business that we're in the back part. And the offices where we work out of, it's basically already an apartment with three bedrooms. It's set up very nice, we already have a kitchen, a dining room, we have a shower, we have a laundry room, we have two offices and a huge open space where I work, which could easily be, remain a living room, and then part of the kitchen could be made into another bedroom. It works out really perfect. The front half would take a little bit more work. I went up and, you know, did some measuring and checked it all out. It already has a kitchen, there's already two bathrooms, has two offices, which could be easily bedrooms, and then the show floor could easily be divided into, just put up a wall and make two more bedrooms, and then you would have a huge living room space, it's already got a counter, which, you know, could be left or taken out, whichever. And then the two are separated by a huge bay area, which is where then we would put our shop, Davidson Bush, and we would do, we'd do heating, cooling, and plumbing.
Okay, so this number four and three seems logical to you.
Yeah, oh yeah, the back half is already like three bedrooms, and then the front half could be easily, two offices would already be bedrooms, and then just make two more bedrooms with some walls.
There's already a rental unit in the back?
No, we use it for our office, for Davidson Bush.
But it's laid out like an apartment.
But it's laid out like an apartment, it's perfect.
So at one point, this had apartments?
No.
You just happen to have a kitchen as part of your...
Yeah, that was right, when they originally built the building, not right now.
It's not the building of the unit that comes into question, it's the use. You can build any kind of building you want, but until you use it for something, that's when the zoning came.
So there's no permit of rental?
No.
That's what I was going to say. Okay. You know, when the building was built?
We built it eight years ago.
So were you thinking it might be rentals at some time when you built it?
No, this would just come up recently.
Employee first.
So you mentioned that you think you're going to lose your tenants in the front Caterpillar, but is that for sure?
Well, they don't have to, they only have to give us a thirty-day notice and they'll have to give it to us by the end of December. But things do not, we haven't gotten official word, but the three other people that work up front are looking for new jobs. And they've already asked them, do you want to move to Jackson, or do you want to move to Parkersburg or whatever? So it's pretty much a done deal, I think, we just haven't been notified yet.
So in asking for a variance, you know, it often happens and somebody will come back and say, well, you gave them a variance in a B3. So I personally feel like I have to be very particular about giving these variances because then it comes right back to bite you. So my question is, you have, you still have the opportunity to find another business?
Perhaps, but if we did, it would probably be just for the front, just for the front office section. Like, it would be perfect for like a used car dealership or something. But now that a lot of businesses is coming in...
I did look in the front display area, so you could, there's a large open area.
Yeah.
So then, even if you would rent that out, you still have additional space? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, in the center, it's separated by a humongous bay area, which we would use for then, for our business, our heating, cooling, our equipment and materials and stuff. And then there's a small section in there where we could, Sharon and I could have our office.
And this may take another visit here as well, so obviously we'll have to have drawings and everything else. I think that, I advise them to come here to just kind of give your blessing or variance that they can proceed in this direction, worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
And then, obviously, this will be a three and a four, and if they end up renting out the front unit to a business, then it's just a three in the rear with their office in the middle, in the bay, and a commercial business in front. So there's a lot of unanswered questions to this, but in order for them to proceed with what they want to do for their leasing purposes, they kind of wanted to get an answer of what would happen, so.
I kind of tend to agree with you, Joan, because, you know, this is an ad hoc situation.
Right.
And perhaps we can maybe put a condition for by this date, you have to have something definitely, or the variance is off, or maybe, because we could put a condition, the variance, if it's not built by the end of the year, then the variance is void.
Well, the other thing is...
That's the rule, that's not a condition, that's not at all. If they don't, if they would get the variance tonight and not act on it at all for a year, it's void.
Yep, that's, that's seen better.
You know, a lot of people have come and they've gone to the architect and they've brought in drawings and they're ready to go, and I think that's what we expect to happen. And so I, you know, and a couple of people have complained when we don't have the things that we feel like we need to have to make a good decision.
True.
And I think that it would be better to come back with a concrete plan. I mean, I feel really uncomfortable doing something when we don't have a concrete plan.
tentative suggestion, it's got to draw a tentative vote.
Right, yeah, it's just as unsettling. I mean, here tonight, we have the ying and the yang, we have the people already finished and now we have the people that haven't started. I don't know.
Our only issue is that if, if they tell us, if they don't give us a notice until thirty days before they actually move, we only have so much money to make the payments. That's why we were trying to, you know, get something in order so that we would have something to start with, immediately go to work on getting it ready, so that we don't get too far behind.
And the rear apartment's already there.
Yeah.
And they did apply for a rental permit, which I denied them because it was going to be three, so that's why they're here.
Now, the rear of it would be, wouldn't take very much at all to be apartment-ready. The front half would take, or the front third would take a bit more doing, but the rear of it would, could be ready pretty quick. Everything's already in place, basically.
Do we know of any other businesses in that area that have rentals on the first floor in that, because I, that is a very different part of town out there.
Rentals on the first floor in that area, I don't know.
With the business?
Oh, with a business?
Yeah, well, because it's a B3, but...
Yeah. I don't know, mixed.
Almost everything from the light all the way to Radford are rentals or businesses.
Right.
There aren't even, even the residential homes are rentals.
Right, and B3s.
Yeah, they're having in, once again, we have to make that clear.
I guess I wonder why, what is the purpose of forbidding rentals on the first floor of a business under this, in the code? And then what would be the reasons for?
Because of Court Street and a lot of businesses around town.
So you're saying that's not really relevant to this part of town?
Well, that's...
It's relevant to any place that has a business.
For you guys to decide.
And then, under what circumstances should that be, should a variance be granted? I mean...
Well, that's up to you personally, I mean, just visualize every business.
This happened a few weeks ago, if you recall, a few months ago, if you recall.
Yes, we're being sued because of that.
The other thing is, when you look at this particular area, and so I know we have to think about B3s in general, but, you know, there's businesses that move a lot of trucks around, and in that particular area, I felt uncomfortable...
Very.
Yes, well, it is mixed across the street, there's houses, and those are probably the rental houses, but on the side of the street where this piece of property is, there seems to be businesses with, that don't seem, in an environment where you would want to, you know...
Have housing?
Yes, exactly, rent a piece of property, and I, I understand financially all this, but that is not, we cannot consider that whatsoever.
On the one side of us, though, are the fifteen apartments that he and someone else also owns. So we, so I mean, each of those fifteen apartments. On the other side is bedrock rental, and there are actually two fences, two chain-link fences separating us. We have a chain-link fence completely around our building, and then there's about twelve, fifteen feet, and then Brent has his chain-link fence. So there's no, and there wouldn't be big trucks coming in and out of ours, UPS trucks or FedEx, but it would just be all a workplex.
So the apartments that you manage are not the Hoon Drive apartments?
It's the Riverside Apartments directly across from Kerr, and it's down in, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Final board remodel? No? You've got a good manager.
I would suggest if the board has qualms about possibly approving this based on the fact they don't have any concrete plans, of course, any plans they submit have to be approved through us and I would assume through the state.
Yes, definitely.
But if you're concerned about size or something, they have submitted a permit application with four and three, and perhaps the board might consider that as a condition, that they're allowed to have it on the first floor as long as there's no more than seven tenants or, you know, four, three in the back or something along that. That would certainly limit, to a certain extent, what they'd be allowed to do.
We have done that in other businesses in the far rear of properties, if you all recall.
Before you approved the three with a condition on the four, since that part's not built yet, but the three is built to the rear.
Do you all... Do you mean up top, please, or...
Yes, so we have, on first floors, we have approved...
Really?
Yes, in very long, large buildings that the back is allowed to be...
Talking on West Day Street there.
Union Printing.
Yeah.
Was one we did.
We've done a couple of those, I think, not many, but we have.
I didn't approve.
It passed, that's all I know. But, right, so that is...
That, that's that apartment in the back behind that, that's now, I don't know what it is now.
It's a law, was a law.
Yes, investment, but so that is an apartment on the back. I didn't know that for a fact.
I'm sorry, you were finishing something before somebody said something. Are you done?
Um, I'll...
Okay. But we're looking at a two here, so if we just hit one...
Well, as Paul was suggesting, that you could, you could grant the one from the back, and then with the condition that the front one, they come back, how, what do you...
Yeah, well, I mean, if you want them to make two trips, but in my opinion, I think if you would put the condition that the first-floor residential use is allowed with this number of units and this total number of tenants, those would be limits, considerable limits on their part, because obviously...
It's not like there's a lot of space, I mean, they could make many.
What I'm concerned with is if you want them to pin down, pin them down to have specific plans for both units and exactly what they're going to look like, and then they get to working on it and realize, oh, wait, we can't have this bedroom here at this size because of some utility or something like that, they have to come back again with a simple plan to change one room. I'm suggesting that you have faith in the process that if you limit the number of units and number of tenants, that once they begin submitting applications to us and to the state, we can make sure that those apartments are at standard condition and minimum safety standards.
Seems reasonable?
Yeah.
Close the court.
Discussion's both my floor. Any discussions on board members? So we're talking about seven total units in the building?
No, two units, two tenants.
Two units, seven tenants.
Need a motion? I believe that we approved the variance in case eleven dash fourteen V, seven sixty-two West Union Street, Steve Bush, appellant. Appellant is requesting a variance from Athens City Code twenty-three point oh four point oh seven A, referencing Athens City Code twenty-three point oh four point oh five A1, to allow residential use, two apartments on the first floor of a building located in a B3 zone, where such use is not permitted.
With the condition?
With the condition that... With the condition that...
Total of seven.
Total of seven?
Tenants.
Tenants.
Within the two.
Within the two buildings.
No, the two apartments.
Two apartments.
I second that.
Paul, you got that right?
Yeah.
Okay, findings?
What was my findings?
Practical difficulty, and on do you watch it?
Well, I'm, you know, I feel, I think, very similar to Joan in that this is a B, and if we start messing around with this B again, we're just going to get stung again. And I think we should leave these Bs the way the code's written, that residential use on the first floor should not be allowed.
In any instance? It would seem to me that that's why we're here, is to discuss and consider and on occasion grant the...
Well, if it's in, you know, if you feel that it should be in a most instance, then we should change, the planning commission should change the code. But right now, the code says no, blanket no. And yes, we look at each one individually, and in this individual situation where it's located, it's not conducive to residential use in there.
Were the other apartments, is that strictly a B2? Were the other apartments...
There's no other, they're not first floor, second floor, commercial. It's just apartments.
I understand that, but that isn't a B zone.
That is correct.
Twenty years ago.
I mean, but it was there before it was zone B, or we assumed they wouldn't have built them.
Well, back to case content, do, what are we here for? We are here to give variances to cases that can be supported by the six findings. There's no hardship or difficulty because there's no exceptional circumstance? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, there's a practical difficulty.
Well, yes, what I'm having discomfort with is a practical difficulty hasn't been realized. And we're asking to make a decision, to make a change to, to grant a variance on something that may not exist.
With the practical difficulty being, not being able to have a tenant?
Right, exactly. And so then, we're providing a variance and setting a precedent of sorts when it may not even be necessary, but we're being asked to do that. And that's where I'm having the problem.
Are we creating a hardship for them if you say no? That's the question.
Well, all this is...
No, I would like this moment, no.
Okay, it's tied to the exceptional, extraordinary circumstances. So what are the extraordinary circumstances, or...
What are the exceptional circumstances for this piece of property?
Well, apparently, you need a business to go back in there, correct, in order to make their rate? Another type of business.
Well...
Well, the exceptional circumstances are that they have this apartment in the back.
Is that ex...
It's not an apartment?
Well, it isn't an apartment, but it's...
It's never been rented.
It's never been rented, but the facilities exist.
Okay.
When we were talking about rear places, okay, the facilities exist, so you could do this. This is a large space. But not in the front. That all has to be remodeled and redone. And we don't know what that's going to be like. We don't even know if that's necessary.
Well, given what you're saying, I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't back up, vacate the motion, and proceed with two motions on the front.
One for the three and one for the four.
One for the back.
Right. I think that would be more practical.
Well, I don't know if that would help you or not help you.
If it wasn't advertised that way, they'd have to come back. They'd have to come back. If it wasn't advertised that way.
They'd have to come back?
If you're, it's, they're asking for a variance for two apartments, and you're trying to change it to one.
To untangle them, yes, to disengage.
So in my opinion, that would be a different...
Okay, so then we would have to say yes or no to this, as it is, the motion that we made?
Well, yeah. I mean, as presented, yes, you have to say for two apartments.
Okay.
If you want to change, if you change your variance request to, say, to the back apartment, I think it's a substantial enough difference that we would have to readvertise.
They don't have to wait for a year again?
No, because if they came back with the request for one, that's a substantial...
For next month, they could come back or whatever.
Yes.
But if they're diminishing, if it would be making the requests less, and the larger request has already been advertised, then why would anyone care?
Someone may. The public has a right to know.
Well, I'm thinking about how people might vote, so if they are hoping to get something out of us, it would be better to get something at the moment, or later, next month, say, than nothing. And then that wouldn't keep them from coming back, and assuming that they got a yes on that, wouldn't keep them from coming back and asking for a variance for the other part at some point when maybe they're more sure of what's going to happen. I don't know.
So you want to just vote on this thing, and then, if they want to come back here from their office manager, if she wants to withdraw this variance request, or to continue and vote on it?
Do you want to tell us what you're thinking, Mr. ...?
I'm thinking if there's a request for a four and a request for a three, and it's just taking the same proposal and splitting it, does that warrant coming back? Or can we do that right now? Because it's still the same number.
Still a B.
And there is a process where if you go ahead and split it up tonight, and somebody's watching on TV and they don't like it, they have the right to appeal.
Yeah, that's what I'm inclined to...
I think that we can go that route. That's...
You never know.
Okay, so... Okay, do you want, how would you like us to proceed? Do you want us to vote on what we were about to vote on? Do you want to come back later? Do you want to...? Okay.
Now you realize that to come back...
If you vote, it'll be for both.
Right.
That's what you have to do. That's what you have to do.
Please say no at that time.
But if you vote this down for two apartments, they would still be allowed to come back if they wanted to with a variance request for one apartment.
Yes, that's right.
So if the two get voted down now, you could come back next month if you wanted to and ask for a variance for one apartment.
But if you want the full, you have to wait a full year?
Yes.
We have to come back, and we have to wait a whole year?
No, no.
If you want to go again for the two apartments. What they're saying right now is they can vote on the variance we have before, it's now for both apartments at once.
Right.
Okay. If for some reason they would turn that down, you'd be allowed to come back next month with a request for one apartment. You couldn't come back next month with a request for two like you have now, because there is a rule, procedure, that you have to wait a year if the variance request is the same. But if you come back next month with just one apartment, that's enough of a change in the variance request that you can come back right away.
But you'll have to make a whole other application and the fees and everything again. So if you decide to go now and you get denied, then you've got to come back in again. Or if you want to table it, change your decision on whether you want to come in, we can readvertise it for next month. We can do it that way, too. It's up to you guys how you want to do it.
Just let them vote for the two, and then if they're not, we'll come back with the one.
Good.
Okay, we were up to, what, reservation of equal property?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, basically.
Real quick. So if you deny, and we come back for one, then if we want to try again for the other...
You can do that down the road.
That has to be in a year?
No.
Okay.
You can come back with that, either one of them, anytime you want to.
Okay.
Even next month?
Yeah, you can come back next month with the three for the rear, and then, and then if you don't sell a tenant for the front for the commercial, then you go for the four for the front at any time.
Okay, preservation of equal property rights. Would they be deprived of their rights if we deny their appeal?
You know...
No.
No. Okay, minimum variance?
No, it's not. They're asking for the full building.
Right.
It's maximum usage.
Absence of detriment?
Well, theoretically, there would appear to be no detriment, but who knows who's watching TV? So my perception may not be the same as other people's.
And now that a general nature...
Slowly becoming bigger.
Okay, Mr. Lovell?
Yes, John.
Yes, your vote is yes?
No, my vote is no, John.
Benny?
I'm going to vote no also.
Michelle?
No.
Joan?
Yes.
No.
You said yes.
No, I said yes. No.
I would know as well. You don't have the variance, and if you're coming back next year, please bring some more plans and more detailed information, you know, so we can...
Next month.
Next time, did I say?
No, we need better plans just for that.
Anything that you can make us, you know, make a better decision would be helpful.
Just make a better draw.
You can do a number of rooms, you know, everything, details. It doesn't have to be done by an architect, you know, but to show enough indication that what we're looking at. That person would be good, yeah.
Now that you all know where the property is, so if you come by, you could show us around the building.
Okay, that would be good.
Thank you. We're almost done. Anyone with any minutes after last month?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the motion for the...
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes. And motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll be 23.
Paul, do you want these pictures?